Good morning. I call to order the May 19th, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to remind everyone that today's meeting is a virtual meeting. Participants may participate in our meeting from outside by dialing 785-621-0800. You then must enter the participant code of 782956, followed by the pound sign. And if you wish to speak in the public forum or regarding any of our request for action portions, you then must dial *9 to alert the moderator if you wish to comment. At this time, I would ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weis?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. If there's anyone wishes to speak, please come forward or alert the moderator.
Mr. Chair, no one online on the phone bridge has indicated they wish to speak.
We have no one online and we have no one in the hallway, so we will move on to the consent agenda. And today's consent agenda consists of prior minutes, approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll as presented, and approval of the public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or take something away from these, from the today's agenda, consent agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Hearing none, we will, it will stand approved as written. We will move to action items. Item number one, which is an RFA 165-20 KDOT agreement for local road safety program, plan with Justin Mater, our county engineer. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Kansas Department of Transportation has awarded Celine County federal aid funds through the High Risk Rural Roads Program, also known as HRR. These funds shall be used in the preparation of a local road safety plan that will serve as a guide for the road and bridge program in our efforts to improve safety on our local road system. On behalf of Celine County, KDOT will enter into and administer a contract with a consultant to perform local road safety plans. The federal funds will pay for 90% of the contract amount, and Celine County is responsible for the remaining 10%, which would be no more than $5,280.98. And the study will entail all paved roads within the county and gravel roads on the major collector system only, not, not local roads or the minor collector gravel roads. It's just the paved roads and other gravel roads on the major collector systems, so. It is requested that the Celine County Commissioners approve and sign the KDOT agreement 141-20. I've got two alternatives for action. The first is to approve and sign the KDOT agreement, and the other one would be to not sign the agreement, of course. Staff recommends to sign the agreement with KDOT and the disbursement of not more than $5,280.98 for the development of this local road safety plan. Funds to participate in the program will be taken from the 127 Account Special Highway Improvement Fund.
Probably a little bit early, Justin, to ask this question, but do we have any specific plans for those funds yet?
No, we do not. No, we don't.
Other questions or comments from Commissioners?
Justin, this is all separate from, like, our bridge inspections, which we also contract KDOT for, correct?
No, our, our, as far as if you're talking about the biennial bridge inspections, you know, we, we do not contract with KDOT with those. We do those in-house, you know. However, we do have to report to KDOT on those bridge inspections. So this is a, a separate program where we're just looking at roads. And there's a new, new thought towards safety, and that's going with what they call the systemic approach to safety instead of the systematic approach. You know, and so instead of just looking at your hotspot safety issues, you know, for instance, if you've got a curve that has, you know, a lot of accidents there, and you go and look at that one specific location only, that's kind of been the approach in the past. And now what the Federal Highway Administration is, is really pushing for states and local governments to look at it systemically. And so you, you find characteristics of the road that causes accidents in a larger area, okay? And so you find those characteristics, and let's just say it's a, you know, a road with an average daily traffic over 400 vehicles a day, and you have a curve with a horizontal curve with a radius less than, you know, 500 feet, okay? Those areas have caused issues in the past, or, and those, those characteristics have cover, or has caused issues in other locations within the state. And so we're going to look at those areas in Celine County with those same characteristics and see what can be done to improve those areas. And so that's kind of the approach with this program.
Justin, will this study, this plan be developed in-house, or will this be contracted out?
This will be contracted out, and with this agreement, KDOT has, they've gone through the process of selecting consultants already, and so they have one consultant and one sub- consultant that has developed all of the plans within the state. And they, KDOT decided to do that in order to try to have a, a uniform approach to, to each county. So KDOT will take care of contracting this out.
If they only have one or two, and we have 105 counties, I mean, is this going to come out via the Internet or something that, with guidelines or something like that? Or they're not going to come out and visually inspect 1,100 miles of Celine County roads and still have 104 counties to go?
So they're, they're trying to do about 20 counties a year. And again, you know, and I said before, this is only for the paved roads and the, and gravel roads on the major collector, major collector system, you know. So we don't have, I'd have to go back and look if we have any gravel roads on our major collector system. Some counties, that's all they have is gravel roads. So we're not talking about the, the entire road system. You know, we're probably looking at about, you know, 200 miles, you know, for us.
Okay.
So, and, and they, and they use, they do come out and videotape the roads, and they take some measurements, but also a lot of it is, a lot of the data's taken off of Google Earth. You know, the, there's other tools out there, free tools out there available to, to do some of the analysis.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, no one on the phone bridge has raised their hand.
All right. There is no one waiting in the hallway and no one on the phone, and at this time, I would like a motion from a Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDOT agreement to develop a local road safety plan as presented by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 165-20 KDOT agreement for local road safety plan. Further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mater.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two, RFA 126-20 Resolution 20-2291 for Rural Fire District Number Two, Board Member Appointment with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to ask for the approval for the Board Member Appointment for Rural Fire District Two. This will make their ninth board member, so they are no longer looking to appoint anymore. Their board's full. Their term will be for three years, ending December 31st of 2022, unless they are reappointed. Staff recommends that we appoint this position. This individual is a volunteer, and he is serving his time to his respective district.
Just a quick question that occurred to me. Are most of the member appointments firefighters of those particular districts?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or from Commissioners? Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, no one on the telephone bridge has raised their hand.
There's no one on the phone and no one in the hallway, so at this time, I would take a motion from Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2291 and appoint Casey Morgan to Rural Fire District Number Two Board of Trustees for a term ending December 31st, 2022.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 126-20 Resolution 20-2291, Rural Fire District Number Two Board Member Appointment of Mr. Casey Morgan. I assume it's a mister. So all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. While you're sitting there, anything exciting from your end of things regarding the COVID or any updates that we need to be apprised of right quick?
I was just telling Commissioner Sparks in the parking lot that it's day 68 since the state declared a disaster. I will be back next week to extend our local disaster declaration for another 60 days. There is hope that we will slowly continue to reopen and rebuild. This week, the governor's meeting with the White House, so I'm excited to see what comes for that.
And the impact of that, extending that declaration is?
It honestly just makes more resources from the state available to the local levels. Just a couple weeks ago, it was probably last week, but I've slept since then, thankfully. Dental offices have been called critical medical providers, so they are now open to receiving resources and PPE, which is wonderful, but we had minimal supplies in the beginning, so by signing that local declaration, it just ensures that I can continue to get them and the hospitals the supplies that they need.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
That'll do it. We will move to item number three, which is RFA 166-20 KIP Outdoor Warning Siren, again with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Hi, again. So Rural Fire District One is requesting the approval to submit and, if awarded, receive the funds from a Dane Hansen grant to fund an outdoor warning siren in KIP, Kansas. Currently, Celine County has eight door, 18 outdoor warning sirens, with 12 of those located in the city of Salina, and the rest of them scattered throughout the county, mainly one in each incorporated city. So through this, half of it will be funded by a grant. The other half is being funded by donation from the Dane Hansen Founda, or, sorry, through Great Plains Manufacturing, the grant is through Dane Hansen. If you do not approve the signing of the grant, Rural Fire District One will return the donated money back to Great Plains.
All right. Questions? Comments? Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, no one on the phone bridge has raised their hand.
All right. No one has phoned in, and no one is in the hallway, so I would take a motion from a Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature a Dane Hansen Foundation Grant for an outdoor warning siren to be placed in KIP, Kansas.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 166-20 KIP Outdoor Warning Siren. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, Michelle? Is this replacing an existing?
Nope, just adding on to the system.
That brings us to the end of today's action agenda items. We'll move into informational items and presentations and so forth. Our item number one will be a human resources update with Marilyn Lemar, our Human Resources Director. And good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. The update for this is from mid-March to mid-May, 2020. We have hired seven new employees, most of those being returned seasonal mowers that we had ready to go in place prior to the health crisis that started. Transfers, promotions, we've had three positions no longer employed. We have six individuals that are no longer employed. Some changes in communications for employees that we did in response to COVID-19. We have the prescription plan that allows for early refills, access to the UMR Employee Assistance Program at no cost, in addition to our current EAP that's available. 100% COVID testing and treatment that is covered by our plan. We have access to Teladoc and Telimed, or it's also Telehealth. We have expanded the flexible spending account, eligible spending on some eligible over-the-counter purchases. The annual wellness routine physical that has a deadline normally of June 30th, we did expand, extend that to August 31st, just allow a little bit more time. Plus, there is also a non-medical option that was added. Coordinated quite a few communications on the advanced approved leave time that Commissioners granted. We did not have anybody take advantage of that, but it was there, that was available if needed. We coordinated communications on the approved pandemic, pay for employees that the Commissioners approved, very much appreciated, and it did allow those employees to stay whole. Coordinated communications and administration of the Families First Coronavirus Act, and that provided some emergency paid leave for employees that were affected by COVID-19, either due to illnesses, or also those that are affected by childcare struggles with the schools closing and childcare facilities closing. We typically offer defensive driving for our employees, a class for that through our workers' compensation provider. Those were canceled as onsite visits, so the K work did allow for some online training, so we coordinated that. Plans moving forward is to fill positions. We did start back up our recruiting efforts on May 8th. We did put in social distancing and disinfecting protocols just to keep applicant and staff safe. Corrections officer, we're looking to fill four positions, hopefully two over hires if possible. Property technician in the Appraiser's Office, transport officer at the Sheriff's Office, that was actually filled yesterday in-house. We have a part-time fingerprint officer. Communicable disease, public health emergency preparedness at our Health Department, truck driver, a truck driver trainee at Road and Bridge, and vehicle registration technician one, and there are two vacancies for that. We'll continue with employer and employee negotiations. We have a blood drive in June. We're drafting alternate worksite and return-to-work policies. Those are both still work in progress. And then we'll just continue to monitor our benefit plan due to COVID-19. Our health plan is running favorably at approximately 85% of the expenses to the funding ratio. Dental plan was running a little hot before, but that has backed off to 89%. We do expect that to go a little bit back up to normal now that the dentist offices are opened back up. We have had no claims hit the stop-loss deductible, and the HR budget is running at approximately 32%, which is normal.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, for those of you that are watching that are unfortunate enough to have lost your job affected by the COVID, Celine County does have job availables for many different spots, so contact our Human Resources Department and go to work for Celine County. Are there questions or comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, Marilyn, thank you very much, a comprehensive update, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We will move to item number two in our informational items, livestock and expo update with Rick Lemar, Livestock and Expo Director. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Commissioners. This update actually covers from January to May because I missed my January update because of special, a special Expo Center meeting. Accomplishments, January for the Expo, January through March 2020, we had 40 event days. Since March 12th, 2020 to today, 68 event days have been canceled due to COVID-19. Sixes of those events have been rescheduled for later this year. The County Weed Department, we filed the annual weed report and annual management plan with the state. A total of 3,871 acres have been signed up for aerial spraying. 254 acres of county right-ofways have been sprayed in 2020. We have sold 1,678 gallons of chemicals in 2020 for noxious weed control compared to 1,626 gallons in 2019. County Farm, we awarded four Oliver Hag Memorial Scholarships. There will be a total of 15 scholarship recipients attending school this fall, 2020. Since 2012, there have been a total of 45 scholarships awarded. Plans for June Expo Center, usually my busy, busy month, but most of my events for June have canceled. Right now, I have six events scheduled for June. The Noxious Weed Department will continue right-of-way spraying and inspections for noxious weeds. County Farm, biannual rent payments of $34,494.74 are due July 1st, 2020. Budget update, the Expo Center budget is at 27.82%. Normally, this time of year, that's running at around 45%, but since I'm shut down, I'm not running any lighting or anything. Rental deposits for 2020 total $9,417. Normally, this time of year, that should be up around $28,000. Weed Department budget used is 24.06%. That is historically normal for this time of year. Deposits for chemical sales for 2020, $19,388.04. The Weed Special Equipment Fund balance is $69,746.47. The County Farm account balance is $170,287.65. And with that, I have just a short PowerPoint. First week of March, we had Equifest come to town. Everyone I talked to said they had a great show, the vendors, food vendors, everybody said it was, it was great for the first year at TPEC and Celine County Expo Center. This is a shot Saturday afternoon before they come to me and said they were out of places to park, or they were running out of places to park. So it was very well attended, and I would like to thank my staff because we had very few problems. They did an excellent job. This is a shot inside of 4H Building. It was really amazing. They just had anything you could think of that had anything to do with livestock. We had big crowds all three days. The only thing they, the, the Equifest said they would do different next year is kind of maybe bring in some shuttle buses to shuttle people in from different areas and do a little different signage for the different buildings to get people familiar with where everything was at. But overall, they were very pleased. And they will, they liked this March date so much that they will be holding this again It's kind of strange to look at these pictures because this was just 10 weeks ago, and there's no, no social distancing here. And shot at Ag Hall, there was, I mean, there was numerous clinics throughout the day. There was just a lot to do that the, and then the second arena at TPEC was where the ranch rodeo and everything was. And it's, from what I've been told, everything was very well attended. So shortly, five to 10 days after Equifest, I was pretty much shut down. All the buildings were shut down. And lately, I've been doing a lot of these food distributions through the state of Kansas. My contact person for these is Carol Vier here in Salina. She has a group of volunteers that comes over and distributes it. This is a shot of the one last month. It didn't start till 10 o'clock, but by, they started lining up at 7:00, and by 10 o'clock, there was over 500 cars there. They actually went through lined up in three parking lots. So the plan is to have one of these every month now for the foreseeable future, is what I've been told. Normally, I only have four of them a year.
Rick, is there requirements or guidelines that, you know, to be eligible to get the, I'm on my head of you?
The one I had last month, there was no requirement. You could just pull up and get food. They did service all but 12 cars of the 520, and they directed them to other agencies. But the one I had last week, you had to show proof of income. I'm not, I mean, I'm not real sure what it was, but I don't know if there's plans to have another one with no proof of income. Even the one last week, there was, it was about the same. There were tons of cars. Plans for June, depending on the June 15th crowd requirements, if it, if it does get bumped up to 90, I probably will have that Palomino Show and that Goat Show. But the auctions, I just don't see having auctions in Kenwood because you're talking over 200 people in that building, so I don't see those happening. Anyway, that's, that's all I have for this month.
Okay, well, I'll say that the Celine County Expo Center is, is one of those, it makes me very proud to be part of the, of our total Celine County package. And you and your staff do an excellent job over there, a wonderful job, and, and the Equifest is just, just a small glimpse of everything that goes on over there all the time. And your willingness to participate and take care of your customers and customer service is just phenomenal to me, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please convey my thanks and everyone else's, I'm sure, to, to your staff over there, so.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from Commissioners?
One quick question, Rick. Are you still, with things slowed down over there, are you, are other departments utilizing some of your staff now?
Road and Bridge had one of my guys, he just came back Monday. He was out there mowing. One guy I have is, is still on family medical leave. And the rest of my staff, I mean, right now, we're working in the barns, repairing stalls, painting, getting signage up ready for when I do open back up. And they're going out with the weed department, doing inspections with them, weather permitting. A couple of them were out yesterday spraying all, you know, going around all the bridges in the county spraying them. But I keep, I mean, I keep, keep them busy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We'll now move into our presentations from different appropriations units that are, they're asking the county for funds for this year. I would ask that they please keep their presentations to a maximum of 15 minutes. And item number three, our first one, is the Tri Rivers Fair Board with their 2021 budget request by Kim Norwood, Tri Rivers Fair Board Member. And good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Kim.
Strange days.
Yeah.
Regarding the Celine County Fair support, dear Commissioners, thank you for your continued support of the Celine County Fair Association. A copy of the profit and loss statement from the 2019 fair was enclosed when this was sent to you earlier. The PNL statement clearly demonstrates The P and L statement clearly demonstrates how critical your support is and the entire Fair Board certainly appreciates it. We would like to ask that you consider some additional contribution toward an entertainment event that will be hosted by the fair. Those events generally cost in the range of $25,000 to $30,000 and we intend to find as many sponsors as possible. A major event can't be successful without the additional support from the county, just as the Smoky Hill River Festival would not be as successful without the support from the city of Salina. Last year we requested a contribution of $20,000 plus an additional 10 to help defray the cost of hosting a concert. We would like to renew that request. Any and all help is appreciated. We thank you for your support of the 2020 year and for any additional support you can make towards the concert. We look forward to your continuing support for the 2020 fair and are available to visit with you in this regard. True, very truly yours, Saline County Fair Association.
All right. Are there questions or comments from Commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much and you'll be hearing from us as we get further into our, our budget proposals season, I guess you would call it. And obviously we'll do everything we can for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Certainly. Thank you.
We will move to item number four, which is the OCCK 2021 budget request with Sheila Nelson Stout, President from OCCK.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheila. And as Sheila takes her, her seat, I would like to recognize and say, job well done, Sheila. I know that recently you received the Distinguished Leadership Award.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, it was bestowed on you by the Mark Elmore Award, the Interhab. So I know that things are, the pat on the backs out there are, are numerous, but they're not loud enough, I guess you would say. I, I know that you and your organization, your staff do a wonderful job for the community and surrounding counties in, in Saline County and taking care of those that are a little less fortunate than some of us. So at any rate, congratulations on receiving that award. And you're, that, I'm not cutting into your 15 minutes yet.
Okay, good, good.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you for that recognition. It was, it was a surprise at the annual conference and so there were 700 people in the room and I didn't know I was getting an award. So they announce and they read about you and then you have to go up and do an acceptance speech. So that was quite an, an honor, first of all, and my heart was racing so fast. By the time I got up there, I don't even remember what I said, but it was, it's a great honor.
I can imagine. Wow.
Yes, yes. So thank you, first of all, for having us. And OCCK is entering its, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. OCCK is entering its 50th year this year. So we're celebrating 50 years of being an organization in Saline County. And I first wanted to say thank you for your partnership. We have partnered with Saline County for almost all of those 50 years and I can't tell you how nice it is to reach out to all organizations, but particularly counties, as we move forward to try to do good things for people. We can't do that without those partnerships and input and those kinds of things. So we're really excited to celebrate 50 years this year. We certainly aren't celebrating it in the ways that we planned, but hopefully by the end of the year, we may be able to have a celebration. So, so anyway, I appreciate your support. I, I know we come and ask for things every year and sometimes we don't say thank you very well. So I have with me this morning Susan Sprague, who is Vice President of Expansion. You met her last year. And Patrick is with me, who you've known for a long time. He's our CFO. I, I think I'll do a short presentation, then Susan's going to do a little and then Pat is here if you have questions. So it certainly has been an interesting year and I think everybody got handouts. Yes, you did, because you referred to them. So, you know, the pandemic has hit everyone very hard. It certainly hit OCCK and every other business in, in, in the state of Kansas. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what we did because I'm so very proud of our staff and what they've done this last couple of months. You know, we're an essential provider and so we, we provide healthcare. We go into people's homes. We do those kinds of things. And so we knew right away that we were going to continue operating. We closed our offices. We did all of those kinds of things on March 19th. Since that time, our leadership, we meet every day and we do planning to try to figure out what ways can we help in our communities. So many people have so many needs right now. It's been amazing. So we started by calling all of the 4,000 customers that we served last year to say, hey, what do you need? What are you afraid of? Can we teach you? Are you feeling safe? Do you feel like you have all the information you need? All of those kinds of things. And since that time, we've called everybody, every couple of weeks, everybody that we could, and asked what we could do. We pared down face-to-face meetings, but of course we run assistive technology services. So we have telehealth and we have all kinds of computers and those kinds of things. So we've shared them so that people could see their family members because they can't visit. All of those kinds of things, as many as we could do. We've reached out to family members to talk about how are you feeling? What are you afraid of? Can we help you through this? You know, there's lots of family members that are elderly people. We got asked to deliver groceries to people and to maybe go pick up some prescriptions for family members. We got asked, people would call and say, hey, I'm afraid to leave my house. Could you help? And we did. So we met lots of new people through this pandemic and were able to do, I think, good things for people. We did not, we, we reached out, of course, to all the health departments and the police departments and the EMS departments, hospitals that we partner with regularly, but those partnerships have been so valuable lately. You know, we're on teams to reopen Kansas and all of those kinds of things. But I think it strengthened the education that we could do because we, we have so many resources in our communities. We did not, we have not laid off anyone. We've certainly scrambled to keep everybody employed because, boy, it just creates, you know, like when you throw a rock in a pond. And so we have been able to keep everybody busy. They're cleaning buses, they're doing all kinds of things. They're volunteering. We volunteered at the food pantry here last week and went and cleaned and helped stock shelves. And so we're doing all kinds of unusual things, but we're doing everything we can do. We've distributed supplies to people who need the masks, to people who can't get out unless, you know, they're pretty vulnerable or fragile health-wise. We've used our therapists, our social workers to just publicize our number to say, hey, if you're feeling isolated or lonely, we have somebody that you can talk to and people have been calling. As the time goes on, of course, it gets harder and harder to stay home. We've provided free rides to people for transportation since the middle of March. We know people are struggling financially. We've had volunteers making masks. We made thank you baskets for hospitals and emergency providers and, you know, our customers sent cards to people saying, boy, we appreciate everything you're doing. We've had staff volunteer to go work with people who are sick, which is amazing to me. You know, I hear horror stories across the state of we, some organizations can't get staff to go to work. Not the case with our staff. They're the, they're the opposite. They, they're saying, what can we do to help? And people are, all of us are afraid. So anyway, I, I don't think I've ever seen a time when I've been more proud of our organization and what staff are doing. And so we plan to continue to do those things. One of the things that we did, the only other thing that I'll comment about, you know, last year, leading up to the 50th anniversary, you, you always look, we're always looking at how do we partner more with communities and how do we do more, reach more people? We're in a rural area and it, it's critical to get as many services out as possible. So we initiated a planning process last fall and summer, thank goodness, before all of this hit. And we brought people together and asked them questions about what do they need? What are you worried about? What would you like to see OCCK do? Between roundtables that we had and surveys, we had about 250 people show up for roundtables in Concordia, Beloit, Abilene, Salina. We had really nice conversations and this is kind of what we heard from people. People want more services in rural areas. Everybody has to drive to see a specialist, to see a doctor, to see those kinds of things. People very much talked about wanting to age in place. You know, people want to live in their homes or they want to live in a home. They don't want to go someplace. They wanted to know how we could partner with other human service organizations so that people don't have to go to place after place after place. People want more access to medical specialists and they want more access to technology. Can't OCCK use your technology to, you know, to hook us up to the specialist in Wichita so we don't have to drive there? They want to improve accessibility in rural areas, lots of places, people, if you use a chair or if you use a walk, you know, walker, it's hard to get in. More, a lot of need for affordable, accessible housing in all the communities. People need help with employers, I'm sorry, employment. And we heard that both from employers and people with disabilities. And people feel very isolated in rural areas, you know, as, as people age, you know, your friends die and all of a sudden you, you, you want to stay home, but you know, there's nobody to talk to, there's nobody to check on. And so they wanted us to use technology to be able to, you know, reach out to people if they're feeling isolated and help with meds or help with little things that will keep people independent. So I thought that was really interesting. It certainly gave us our marching orders for all of the things that we need to do over the next few years, which is wonderful. It's interesting, last year we served 4,047 people at OCCK, which is the most people we've ever served. And we gave 380,000 rides to people through all of the transportation services. Those are our two last, largest numbers ever on our 50th anniversary. So I thought, I thought that was a great, a great milestone for us. We're not asking for an increase this year. I understand that counties are as hard hit as we are and cities. And so I think, I think we all just need to survive this year. I think there's more to do, but I think we've got to get our economy stable. So we're just asking for the same amount. We certainly appreciate that. We would love it if we didn't have to have across-the-board cuts. That's what we're hoping for. So anyway, I will turn the microphone over to Susan to talk a little bit about specific services and then, or if you have questions of me, I'll be glad to answer those.
I have a comment, Sheila, and that is, it is, really hits me right in the running lights that, that OCCK is not asking for, for an increase, recognizing the fact that Saline County is going to be impacted in their budget just as much as everyone. And, and our budget or as we do things impacts the taxpayers, as you well know. And to, to take that approach is, goes a long way with me, I can tell you that. So we appreciate that and appreciate all of your hard work out there with you and your staff. So I, again, I'm cutting into your time, so.
No, it's fine. Thank you very much. Other questions before I turn the mic?
Just a quick one here on your sheet that you put out here. And you, where it shows where you started in Alzheimer's and dementia services? And you serve 211 people. And just a quick question, is, is there other agencies in, in this area that are doing the same thing?
Well, we partner with the Alzheimer's Association of Kansas.
Okay.
And so we're using a partnership approach. If we, if we run, and you know, some of the senior centers are doing some things. So we've partnered with some, so we partner with everybody we can. You know, with this is a grant, these monies are coming from KU Partnership. And so we just keep adding partners to try to make it as strong and as long-lasting as possible. So yes, we do partner.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just wanted.
Yes. And Susan can tell you more about the details, but, but I know we're partnering a lot with organizations.
Oh, thank you.
And KU's been, oh, a blessing for us in Salina. So that's good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheila.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm Susan. Thank you for having us have the opportunity to speak a little bit today. So I wanted to also add to what Sheila was saying. The Y, the YMCA was, they shared their meeting space. We had a lot of folks come into an Alzheimer's prevention. Actually, I think it was about 45 to 50. We ran out of space, so we had to make more room. It's been good. And then just to share with you an aside, you know, so I'm, I'm in charge of expansion, in charge of growth. And I remember looking at Sheila when all of this was starting and thinking about the new programs we were starting. Alzheimer's, we're continuing autism, telehealth. And I said, and I said, ah, growth during this time. And Sheila said, you know, don't stop, don't stop, just adapt, adapt, change the, the way you're doing what you're doing. And so I took it to heart. And we, we put what we, we're doing with Alzheimer's prevention and we put it in a format easy, easy for people to use. You know, the whole video chat thing, but we did it in a variety of formats that would be easy for, for I hope, anyone. So anyway, just adapting, we're still able to share those Alzheimer's prevention things. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit, so we had, we had talked about telehealth a year ago. We started researching different telehealth platforms and equipment that they had to work wherever you lived, even if you didn't have high-speed internet. They had to be easy to use. So it wouldn't rely on your phone. The equipment would be, would be given to you and installed by a nurse and she would teach you how to use it. So you could check your blood sugar, your blood pressure, anything that your primary care physician was wanting to monitor during the week. And then you learned how to use that. So anyway, this whole telehealth thing, we had been thinking about that for some time and kind of researching what would work best for, for folks in our area and the counties that we serve. And so we do have that in place. We're just kind of getting it off the ground. But the whole telehealth with, with the pandemic, which who would have thought, you know, that's really become a tool to keep communication for, for therapies, for medical. And that communication is so critical, particularly if it's difficult for someone to get out anyway, and then adding on a pandemic. And I wanted to really quickly share two other services. Autism, I, I maybe spoke with you very briefly last year. We were, it was a dream of Sheila's for a long, long time. She found out that parents in Saline County, parents were waiting for supports for kids with autism and this, this home and community-based model of that support. And so she asked when I, when I came on board, you know, I just want you to tuck this in your mind and be thinking about it, how we could add autism supports to what we're doing. And so we were able to find some, some good people. One gal is from the elementary education, she knows sign language and stuff. Anyway, we're starting, we're approved by the state for autism waiver services, which is five and under. And we're, we're asking for another step in approval, which would let us work with families and young people 21 and under. And that's kind of our next step with autism. And that's, do you have any questions for me on any of that?
I don't. Thank you very much for your participation with OCCK and it's very important, obviously, and bringing in new, new programs, like you spoke on about autism and so forth. So very important to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Love every minute of it. Thankful to do it.
Good job.
Thank you.
I should have been able to use Pat.
They, they know you want.
Okay.
All right. Is there any, any other comments from your group? Any, any further questions? I guess not. So thank you. You'll be hearing from us. We appreciate it very much. All right. Thanks so much. We will move to item number five in our informational items, which is the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission 2021 Budget Request.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Benedict is appearing by telephone, so I'm going to unmute her line.
Okay. This is Emily Benedict, the Executive Director. And I believe Emily's probably in Beloit, Kansas, which is where their home office is. Good morning, Emily.
Good morning.
Fine.
So yeah, this is.
I am the new Doug McKinney that some say, but I won't say that because he leaves shoes way too big for me to fill. But I am here in Beloit, just really on, yesterday was the first day that we're actually back in the office working with less staff, but most people are still working from home. But I just wanted to chat and give you guys some information on the things that we're doing in Saline County right now in hopes that we can continue our partnership with Saline County for the next year and many years into the future. But I guess, do you guys have any questions before I begin?
Uh, no. I take it, I'm certain that Doug McKinney has retired at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
He actually, you might still see him around, though, because he's actually, we went ahead and he's serving as a consultant for us now through the end of June. On a, on a EDA project, actually, in Saline County. So you might still, you might still hear from him for the next two months. And then after that, he's, he's free to, free from us, I guess.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners at this point?
Nope.
If not, go ahead, Emily.
Okay. Well, as you likely know, the Regional Planning Commission has 12 counties that we serve, and obviously, one of them is Saline. So I was going to start just going over some of the programs that we offer in Saline County. First is our business finance, which is headed up by Deborah Peters in our office. This is revolving loan funds and just other assistance to local businesses. Debbie is an incredible resource that just about anyone can call up with questions related to business. And she has the knowledge and experience to answer those questions. So we consider that a really good asset for the whole county and anyone that needs that assistance. There's community development. Nicole McDaniel primarily works in Saline County with a lot of the cities. Some of those recent projects include, the city of Assaria has a big water distribution project going on right now that we're administering. Nicole is currently helping Saline County and the city of Salina with the community development block grant COVID funding for, to be able to apply, or to be able to give grants to local businesses. Just wrapped up a commercial rehab project in downtown Salina at the old Mopec Depot. And then, as I mentioned, Doug's also currently serving for a big EDA project in Saline County. Housing is another, another thing that's available in Saline. It's been a little bit slower in the past few years, but we're hoping that we can launch our new homeownership program that was developed by Deborah Peters in Saline County, hopefully in the next year or two. This provides grant and loan down payment assistance to anyone that's looking to buy a house in Saline County to try to help boost that market. And then our Assistant Housing Director, Keegan Bailey, she's been chatting with a couple of communities in Saline County about the housing rehab program. So just a few things for Saline, but a couple other things that we do that are more statewide or just on a wider scale that we serve Saline County also is, we have our weatherization program. The program's run by Amanda Peterson. And this program, any low-income household can apply for weatherization assistance. And it's all grant dollars to help ensure their health and safety by improving the energy efficiency of their homes. So that's, we have 41 counties that we serve for weatherization. There is, of course, Homeland Security that's run by Lisa Peters. And she's, she's the director, but we're the fiscal agent for seven different security councils across the state. I mean, that's funding primarily for equipment and training to help with preparedness and responses for emergencies. And then one of probably the most active things right now is our North Central Kansas Public Health Initiative. And that's, the director for that is Lacy Miller. And that is a coalition of 13 county health departments, including Saline. They're all this COVID-19. They've definitely been very active. That's proven to be a big asset for the region. They're meeting, I think they're meeting weekly right now just to be able to talk and figure out what other counties are doing to address everything that's going on right now. But yeah, that's just sort of a quick overview of some of the services that we provide that Saline County hopefully can see the benefit from. But, you know, I think one thing about the Planning Commission is, we, I feel, we truly are just a resource. And about any situation, you know, if anything ever comes up that someone in the county or working for the county has questions on or needs assistance with, we're just always here to have, lend an ear and help where we can. And usually, if we can't help you specifically with something, we have the, we know the person that can. So we just appreciate the support of Saline County and want to keep working with you guys moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But otherwise, that's pretty much all I got.
All right. Well, thank you. I will ask our Administrator, have we received a formal document from them as far as their request is concerned? It's not in my packet, so.
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. I do not recall receiving a written document from them. Perhaps Emily knows if anything has been sent, but I believe their request is the same it has been for a number of years at that $4,000 annual appropriation level.
Okay. That was kind of my question right there, so. All right. Thank you, Emily. Are there any questions from, from commissioners? If not, thank you for your presentation and you'll be hearing from us.
Yes, that sounds good. Thank you. Hopefully, I can be there in person next time, but for now, make sure.
Well, no kidding. That's, that's part of the deal right now. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks. Bye-bye.
We'll move to item number six on our informational agenda, and that is the County Administrators' Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Three items that I wanted to just update the Commission about this morning. The first, you may recall that it has been a goal of Saline County and the city of Salina and the rural fire districts to update our radio communication system and get better communication for our first responders. And so we have engaged a consultant and issued a request for proposals and received proposals. And then this coronavirus happened. So all of that got kind of put on hold. We finally were able to meet with our consultants last week on the 13th to review the informational interviews that we conducted with the two outside vendors. The proposals are very tightly ranked even after those interviews. So what came out of that is we decided we needed to have a meeting just with city and county staff to hash out recommendations to the governing body. So that is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 26th. So hopefully, in June, you will be hearing a recommendation out of the 911 Council. The second issue, just to follow up on what Emily Benedict just told you about, the state of Kansas Commerce Department has issued community development block grant funding for local businesses, a pool of $9 million that's available statewide. Each city and county is eligible to apply for up to $300,000. So we are planning to apply for that. That does require a public hearing. So we will be having that public hearing next Tuesday at your regular meeting. So just wanted to make sure you knew about that. Certainly hopeful about getting awarded some of those funds and distributing back to businesses in the community. And last but not least, a brief update on the statewide reopening plan. Your Commission had a great discussion last week about reopening, and then the governor promptly threw us the curve ball. So we are not in Phase Two this week, as we had hoped. We are in Phase 1.5. Hair salons are now open by appointment, but mask gathering limits are still at 10 people or less. So we are continuing this format for the Commission meetings. Had hoped to move to a little bit more open format this week, but still doing this for at least today and next week. But all doors at the City-City Building are now accessible, and we do have masks available, disposable paper masks available at all county departments now. So that is my update for this morning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Anyone? Not? Thank you. We'll move to item number seven, which is Commissioners' Comments. And I would like to report that last week Administrator Philip Smith Haynes and myself were invited to participate in Senator Jerry Moran's teleconference with the community leaders. And that went well. And he pretty well informed us of, you know, he was, he didn't inform us really of anything. It was just the community informing him of what's going on in Saline County, how we're getting along, what can they do to help us, and things like that. Also attending was Jason Tiller and Michelle Barkley. Jason from our Health Department and Michelle, our Emergency Management Director. So they, they were participants also, and actually were the first ones that he called on to ask what he could do to help them and so forth. So that was, that was a nice meeting, and we appreciated it of the Senators. So any other Commissioner comments from anyone? We will move on then. Looks like we're going to have an executive session and... Oh, excuse me. I've got a right square in front of me. We, item number eight, which is announcements, and I would like to call on our county clerk, Jamie Doss.
This is Jamie Doss. And I just wanted to mention a few things that are coming up, obviously, with the election. We have some deadlines that are coming up right away, so I wanted to get that out there. The candidate filing deadline is June 1st at noon. So if you're wanting to run for an office, you can still do that. We're not by appointment, so you're welcome to come in and file. You can look on our website on saline.org and look under the Election Office, and you can see what positions are up this year. We also have something that we deal with in the primary that we don't deal in other elections. So for the August election, it's a primary election and they're closed, that you also have to choose your party to be able to vote. So June 1st at noon is also the party change deadline. So you will have to affiliate with one of those parties prior to June 1st at noon, so. And last but not least, I am sending out a county-wide mailer to all active voters that has a letter on how they can vote in these, in the elections this year. It is also going to include a voter registration card if they want to change their party or update their address. And it will also have an advanced ballot application for both August and November. So if you would like to vote from home, you can fill out both of those applications. You need one for each election. So you can fill those out, and we can mail you a ballot so you don't have to go out to the polls if you don't want to. So you can vote safely at home.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Any questions from Commissioners of Jamie? Appreciate that. And then I apologize for almost the oversight. It wasn't oversight on my part. All right. We will move then to an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act and reconvene in 30 minutes.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second until we move into executive session for the purpose of non-elected personnel to reconvene in here in 30 minutes. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We are in executive session. Looks like we're going to Room 217. At time, Jamie?
Yep.
I call to order the, we're back from executive session for the Saline County Board of Commissioners. We're back into regular session. I would add that there was no action taken. And are there any further comments or questions from Commissioners, whatever? If not, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, the adjourned today's meeting. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're adjourned.